Can I, I would, I'd like to make a motion that we move up the Waste Free Greenwich Report for next. As there are very patient community members here who have young children probably to go back to.
Andy, right? That's okay. I mean, Andy Vermont is waiting, but that's okay. He's put, he's asleep. I'm sure. That's fine. That's fine with me. Are you guys with that? Okay with that? Could I get a second for that?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of moving Waste Free Greenwich up? Okay, that passes. Okay, good idea. I'm sorry, Andy. Um. Ms. Hartoplas, Mr. Shams?
Oh, my gosh, I don't know what we did to deserve this, but thank you. Awesome. Okay. So, um, first we want to just start off by quickly introducing ourselves. So I'm Angie Harder Phillips and I'm the PTAC Green, Green Chairs Co-Chair. And I'm here tonight with Julie DeShams of Waste Free Greenwich. We're thankful for the opportunity to present and be on the agenda. This is like 10 years in the making for our group. Um, so thank you so much. And a super thank you actually for Dr. Jones and Dan Watson. They met with us yesterday. Um, and we got to have a, like 45 minutes with them during one of the craziest times of the year. So thank you for carving that time out for us. Okay, we're ready to go. All right. Greenwich Public Schools is the town's largest institution and continues, contributes significantly to the municipal waste system, waste stream. But a large percentage of waste generated in schools can be reduced, recycled, composted, or replaced with sustainable products, resulting in fiscal savings, environmental benefits, and educational opportunities. The Zero Waste Schools proposal before you provides a blueprint toward a more sustainable future at Greenwich Public Schools, and a solution to the rising cost of waste disposal and its negative impact during a waste crisis in our state. Um, next, oh wait, he, okay, we're on the next slide. Okay. Um, should I just say next when it's time to go? Okay, great. The Zero Waste Schools Program was crafted by members of the PTAC Green Schools Committee, the Greenwich Sustainability Committee, Greenwich Recycling Advisory Board, and Waste Free Greenwich for your consideration. And it's endorsed by the Town's Conservation Commission, Sustainability Committee, and the Department of Public Works. The proposal is based on over a decade of experience with waste reduction education in our schools, consultations with districts with successful programs like Westport, Scarsdale, West Hartford, and Wilton, on which our proposal is based, and extensive research on best practices and case studies of waste reduction in our schools. Further, it expands existing district procedures regarding recycling. Odd, next please. As we emerge from the pandemic and a plan for the coming school year, the district has the opportunity and responsibility to implement more sustainable waste practices and policies to create a resilient system using an integrated approach, both bottom-up and top-down. The Zero Waste School proposal focuses on three main priorities to be implemented during the 22, 23 school year and beyond. First, reinstate recycling in school buildings. Second, implement the cafeteria waste reduction program district-wide. And third, food scrap production and recycling. It also includes long-term goals like reusable food service ware systems with dishwashers and more sustainable purchasing for future implementation. Next slide, please. The first priority is to reinstate recycling in all district schools, ideally before the end of this school year. District Procedure E dash zero five one point three five approved by the Board of Ed over 10 years ago requires schools to follow state and local recycling laws to promote environmentally sound practice and as an educational strategy. However, in a recent survey, only six of 12 reporting schools currently have recycling bins in cafeterias. Recycling education has not been conducted in over two years. The district is not in compliance with state and local laws and its own codified procedures. Effective waste diversion requires more than putting out bins. When oversight and education fall by the wayside, best practices are not followed and contamination increases, as seen here. Consistent, frequent education and training in the cafeteria and classrooms are just as important. Next slide, please. Successful programs require purposeful strategies, including working with stakeholders and providing guidance on how to participate. According to District Procedure, the responsibility of recycling and waste reduction requires not only bottom-up involvement, but also top-down commitment from district leaders, principals, and facilities. To this end, the Zero Waste Schools Program builds on existing procedure and recommends the formation of a green team at each school to plan and implement strategies, infrastructure, and educational programming. It recommends best practices and training for students and staff, including custodians, to ensure effective and proper recycling in compliance with the law. Next slide, please. The second priority of the Zero Waste Schools Program is district-wide implementation of the cafeteria waste reduction program, which was piloted at the six schools you see here from the spring of 2019 to the spring of 2020, just before COVID. The Waste Reduction Program aimed to decrease lunchroom waste through recycling, liquid collection, and at some schools, composting of fresh produce. Greenwich Recycling Advisory Board funded the new sorting stations, which featured color-coded bins and instructional bilingual posters. To ensure buy-in, a green team meeting was held first to discuss planning and implementation of the program. Green Schools reps and lunch monitors then conducted student training in the cafeterias, and an instructional PowerPoint presentation was distributed to teachers for use in the classroom. Metrics were tracked and recorded to gauge success. Next slide, please. The pilot resulted in a reduction in trash by 55% by weight with an average daily diversion of 61 pounds per school. Liquid collection accounted for nearly half. If the program is implemented just at middle and elementary schools, over 153,000 pounds of trash each year could be avoided and $43,000 over five years saved in tipping fees alone. Contamination in recycling was considerably cut, as you can see, and cafeterias were cleaner as a whole. With COVID, this program was abandoned. The sorting stations were put in storage closets and parent volunteers were unable to train or organize the program, highlighting the need for more coordinated approach with principal, teacher, and staff investment, a top-down and bottom-up approach. Even now, only two schools are using the sorting stations. Implementation of the program district-wide is recommended this fall. Next slide, please. Wilton School District performed a waste audit in their upper elementary school with 900 students and found they diverted almost 91% of their waste through liquid collection, recycling, and compost, which accounted for the greatest amount. Greenwich Schools could have the same results using the Zero Waste Schools Program. Next slide, please.
The third priority of the Zero Waste Schools Program is the reduction and diversion of food waste through donation, shared tables, and food scrap recycling. Food rescue is one way that Greenwich Public Schools can reduce food waste and support neighbors in need. Laws provide liability protections for donor schools, including those participating in the National School Lunch Program. In Greenwich and Fairfield County, numerous public and independent schools partner with Food Rescue US for food donation. Donating is simple and flexible. Surplus can originate from school kitchens, the cafeteria, or from cleanouts before school vacations. To give you a sense of the tonnage that can be diverted, Westport's Staple High School donated over 18,000 pounds just last year. We can attest that there is an abundance of uneaten food to be donated at our schools as well. Next slide, Pete, please. Shared tables are stations where students can return uneaten items in compliance with health and safety codes. These items are then available for other children who may want additional servings, either during lunch or after school. Shared tables are an excellent way to reduce food waste and help hungry kids get their fill. Shared tables are supported by the USDA and the Connecticut Department of Education and are in use in some Greenwich schools already. Next slide, please. Food scrap recycling is another effective strategy to reduce the school's solid waste stream, educate the community about the benefits of composting, and even create a nutrient-rich product for school gardens. With, without food scrap recycling, the trash looks like the bottom image with lots of food waste. Food composes more than 22% of our waste stream in Connecticut and is one of the heaviest components to transport and dispose, a significant expense for our town. The Zero Waste Schools Program recommends a contracted organics hauler, an approach used at many area schools. If best practices are followed, this is a successful strategy in diverting all food scraps, not just fresh produce, in addition to some compostable materials, including the molded fiber cafeteria trays and napkins. The proposal recommends that an organics hauling be highlighted at the Title I schools that lack outdoor composting bins. The estimated cost is $3,000 to $4,000 per school annually, and grants are available for the pilot. Next slide, please. Although considerable invest, investment, $22,000 in grants has been made in the out, and on, on the onsite composting bins, there are significant barriers and limitations to this system, such as the custodial union contract and diversion of only fresh produce. On the other hand, organics hauling, hauling is easier, more impactful strategy to divert organics, and this is our recommended strategy. Next slide, please. One of the most successful ways to cut cafeteria waste is the adoption of reusable wares sanitized by dishwashers. Our schools trash half a million trays each year, which are used for mere minutes. They are the single biggest component of trash, as you can see. These trays, along with single-use disposables, are also expensive to purchase, about $62,000 each year. And this does not include the considerable costs of hauling and tipping fees. A 2019 pilot using stainless steel trays and a dishwasher at New Lebanon School cut waste by 80%. Six bags of trash was cut to just one for all lunch periods. The superintendent's budget now contains $35,000 for planning a dishwasher at the high school, which is a step in the right direction. Other recommendations for the long term include sustainable purchasing, like condiment pumps instead of packets, and encouraging waste-free meals from home. Next slide, please. Local entities can offer support for the planning and implementation of the program. PTAC Green Schools has led recycling training for over a decade in partnership with Grab and Waste Free Greenwich. The Center for Ego Technology also provides free technical assistance to Connecticut schools. This national leader in waste reduction worked with Wilton Public Schools as a case study, which serves as our model. There are also many sources of funding that can be used for toters, signage, events, and a food scrap recycling pilot. We urge the administration to have a collaborative approach and take advantage of the expertise and fiscal assistance available to make the program a success. Next slide, please. We are asking you, the Board of Education, to approve and adopt the Zero Waste Schools Program for implementation in the coming school year. The program is a tried and true strategy for schools to cut waste by increasing recycling and minimizing contamination, donating and rescuing surplus food, and composting remaining food scraps. The initiative educates our community about the importance of waste reduction for public health, environment, and our budget. Let's practice what we teach for a more sustainable future in Greenwich. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, guys. Appreciate it. Um, questions? Yes, Ms. Downey?
Um, so, so Dan is gone, right? Of course he is. Um, there's just to talk about how we can, I mean, it seems to me that certainly getting the recycling and the separating of, you know, in the cafeterias, given that we were doing it already. Um, and it sounds like, you know, at Riverside they were doing it and they're not even one of the six pilot schools. How can we, you know, at least, let's, let's think about like what we can do for the fall and, and in stages? Tony, I don't know if you, I mean, maybe it's a Dan question more than a, it's a you question.
And Dan and I talk together. I mean, we were, we had a good conversation, I think, about it yesterday and some of the challenges that we have. Now, what I did after yesterday, I did send a note out because I didn't know, actually, I didn't remember who the pilot schools were. So I did send a note out to those principals today because you, you have to remember, we just reopened most of our cafeterias, like literally, we, you know, they were having cafeterias in the gym. So um, their intent is to get it reestablished. Um, one or two of them do have some challenges. Um, you know, one of them said even, you know, pre-COVID, it was, it was challenging because on the day when they didn't have volunteers to help, they didn't have anybody to do it in their building, but they're still going to move in that direction for the fall to reestablish where they were. Um, you know, our middle schools are, they're trying to problem solve for next year, but um, one thing that has been great that we learned from COVID was allowing students to eat outside on all those picnic tables. So uh, one of the principals was commenting, he's got to resolve that it may be only inside. Where outside they may not be able to do it because you'd be adding that many more. So they're being very thoughtful about it. And I think that is their intent is to try to reestablish. Then we have a building like New Lebanon, which you saw was great in, in the, the waste reduction, but the actual dishwasher doesn't really do the job, number one. They were finding the trays weren't getting clean enough. And even if they were running them through again, they were having to hand dry them and they didn't have the staff in the, in the kitchen staff to do it. So they'd actually stopped right before COVID because we couldn't solve the dishwasher issue. So we may have to put in a brand-new dishwasher there that is more of a commercial in nature so that the trays get dry. But so the, the staff, the, the principal team, I think are very committed to doing whatever we can do and everybody understands the importance. And I think that is why we put like the dishwasher in for the high school in the budget because that's a third of our district. It really, you know, makes a big difference. So, you know, we're going to do everything that we can. It's just, I can't promise that we can stay on this aggressive plan.
But I think, but I think there's a happy medium, right? I think, you know, I, I think we all agree, like the composting and the food scraps is kind of its own animal, animal, pardon the pun. You're right, there's, there's stages to it. There's recycling, you know, separating of garbage in the cafeterias. I mean, do we recycle paper in the classrooms? That's another, you know what I'm saying? Like, I think there's a number of things we could be doing that we're not.
We actually are, and we, we didn't stop that during COVID, but sometimes people will say, well, I saw the custodian dump the recycling just in the trash. Now, what our, what our custodian staff can't do is you go in a classroom and they didn't use the bins appropriately, they're not going to dig in a recycling bin to pull out the trash and separate it. So that ends up going into the trash. So we, the training aspect, I think is absolutely, we, we haven't done any training in the last two years. That, that's for sure. So I think we can go back over and some of those protocols to help. But we've been recycling, I think today the number, and I know Sean's on, I think we've, we've already spent this year about 55,000 on recycling. Um, and, you know, one of the things that happened to us in 1920, that's why it's hard for me to compare costs, is if you remember in 1920, right before COVID, when we were going through the budget, um, the first selectmen increased the tipping fees, or added tipping fees. I don't know if we ever had them. Um, but, because I was new, but, um, what happened is those tipping fees, basically they were charging the haulers more. So it does help the town budget because they're getting those fees. For the school district, we're like, you would be in your home. It just increased our tipping fees because the haulers passed that on to everybody else. So we're still working through some issues like that, too.
Ms. Costa?
So I was on the PTA board at North Street. We tried with our, you know, um, with our cafeteria, we just did not have the volunteer base to keep what was happening going. I mean, if you knew the number of phone calls I got just to help out in the cafeteria when I had, you know, a small baby at home, like it, it, it's impossible. I can't like run to the school cafeteria to remind kids to throw their apples in the right place. So I, you know, if you don't have the volunteer base, I just don't know how this gets to the next level. And we voted as a PTA to discontinue the food scrap because we just didn't have, and the composting, we just didn't have the volunteers. I think the recycling was probably going just fine, but adding that extra layer, which really required supervision and, and volunteer participation, that was a hurdle we just couldn't overcome. The other thing is, you know, the share table is a little concerning to me as a food allergy parent because I don't, I, we were always operated on the assumption that at schools we do not share food because that could be dangerous for children who have allergies. So I, I've never even heard of a share table. Um, I've seen at some supermarkets, you know, they have, you know, fresh fruit and stuff for kids to take if they're hungry, but in a school cafeteria environment, I have some questions about the share table, particularly for the young children that are not independent at label reading and they may not even have labels. So I'm, that sort of concerns me. But I, I mean, I don't know how we get over the, the hurdle with, with the aspect of composting. That, that's a, a whole other um, hurdle that, you know, unless you have a, a broad base of volunteers and, and what occurs at a lot of schools, and, and I've been through a lot of schools now, um, having lived on the west side of town and, and central Greenwich, is that, you know, some schools have that support and others just, they don't have it.
Are we able to answer some of the, respond to some of the questions? Okay, great questions. And I think in general, like concerns that a lot of people have are questions kind of right away. I don't know if it's possible to pull back up the last slide from the presentation because that one's
Michael.
Really, really important. Actually, I think two things that, if we were to highlight two things out of the proposal, because we, I know it's a lengthy document, probably, actually, you may see very lengthy documents, but, but, uh, two of the really important things are, one, this timeline, and it's laid out a little bit more detail in the actual proposal, what this is for visual purposes. Um, and then also laying out the roles and responsibilities of the green team. So in this timeline, we, we didn't feel that this was too aggressive of an approach because basically what we're trying to do is right away, just do the things that we had been doing pre-COVID, which were working. Um, and then get the other schools, which before, before COVID hit us, right? That was kind of the hope that we would also be able to get these sorting stations back like into all of the buildings. Um, and I think that some of the concerns about composting and the sorting, one, I totally agree, like it would, it can take a lot of effort to, if you're sitting there and managing. Part of the reason that the proposal recommends the, the hauler is that it's, you don't need to manage that, like that, it all, all food, all of the food, even the trays goes into one bin and you wheel that like outside. It's a pretty efficient, um, system. And you don't have to worry about the bins that are outside or the custodial contract or any of, any of those things. So just to answer that point about
So it's an additional hiring expense that we'd have to find.
Right. So in the, in the proposal, the, the pilot is for the, we would want to run a pilot starting in, basically in the beginning of, um, 2023. And that would be for doing an organics hauler where we would, we were totally willing to write for, to get those grants. And there are several places that we believe that we can, like, um, it's about $3,000 to $4,000 um, per school to do that. And we wanted to do that in our Title I schools, which Bob Chaney, who was speaking earlier, kind of highlighted some of the challenges and almost disadvantages, like the Title I schools don't even have the compost bins that the, the other schools already do have. Um, I also wanted, uh, Dr. Jones to, uh, address something that you had mentioned. Part of the reason we really are seeking approval for this proposal is that we need this top, we need this top-down approach. Every school operates really differently. It's our hope that Dr. Jones, you'll be able to say principal at a principal's meeting at the beginning of this school year, you know, if this gets approved. Principals, we're going to ask everyone this year to form a green team. These are the components of the green team, right? And then it, when we did the pilot, it was just, it took one meeting to get everybody off the ground because most of the responsibilities are what people are already doing. I don't know, Julie, if you want to add in.
I'll just add about shared tables. And so there are a, a handful of, of schools that do have shared tables already. And I'll, I'll tell you just what I witnessed is that the food gets grabbed up right away. So that I think kids are, are hungry and no, no, and I
May not be safe for
No, no, I under, I understand the allergy issue and I, a lot of, um, principals share that concern. So another approach is to save it for after school, um, where it can be monitored, um, better if there is after-school activities or like even sending the food home to families, um, where, where their food insecure. And I know some of the schools do do that. So, you know, there's options for this food. It can also go to Food Rescue US. You save it in the refrigerator, you know, save it in the box and they'll come pick it up. So there's uses for that food other than having, you know, an active shared table during the lunch period where there are allergy concerns. I totally understand that as a parent, also with a child with allergies. So.
Joe?
Uh, thank you for the presentation. I have been speaking to Julie for some time now about this. This is an absolute no-brainer. We have to 100% embrace this process. And, uh, uh, whether it's done on your timeline or we adjust to a timeline that we can accommodate, this has to be done. Archaeologists are going to dig up garbage bags we, we throw away 100 years from now and look and say, are they kidding me? They threw this away? They threw that away? They threw this away? It's ridiculous. We have to move to at least where we were and, uh, and, and we have to take this and move forward on it quite aggressively. I suggested, or I, I called Christina today and we spoke about this, was it yesterday or today? I don't know. But I think that your, uh, your, your movement, your campaign, your structure needs one of the Board of Ed members to support you and be your advocate and actually help you get through some things that sometimes, uh, are hard to get through, uh, from the position you're coming from. So it's a great cause and I'd certainly, uh, would like to consider joining it. I've got a lot of stuff on my plate. So do we all. Uh, uh, it's a great thing. I'd certainly like to attach my reputation to and my name to. If there's somebody else who might have a time and some, some passionate, some passion for this, uh, we're going to talk amongst ourselves. And if nobody else will be your advocate, I will be your advocate, uh, for this, uh, for getting this done. But I'll get you a definitive answer, uh, within a short period of time. Call it a week. I'll speak to my member, my Board of Ed members, co-members, and see if somebody else wants to do it, but if not, I'll do it.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you very much.
Karen?
So, hi ladies. Thank you for your presentation. I know I've got to be part of this on the other side, uh, from where you were standing. And so, you know, I, I had a question or two for Dr. Jones and then a question or two or comment for you guys. Um, I know that, you know, since the pilots were run prior to COVID, you'd mentioned the tipping fees shouldn't change. So we really haven't been able to see data on the savings, but I would love to be able to sort of see that, you know, if, you know, how we might be able to kind of look at that now that things are, funding has changed slightly differently and things within our cafeteria and schools have function, are function, functioning slightly differently, uh, since COVID. So I think that that might be another piece to this. So, um, do we have any data or have we spoken to any, you know, uh, the lunch monitors or, uh, other staff members to feel how they, you know, because we have to have our lunch monitors be participatory. Um, I know they have a, a long list of responsibilities at the lunch tables. Um, you know, how we can sort of help support these initiatives, at least the recycling, you know, even if we build this out in a slightly longer timeline so that we can build support and education for the students so they know they don't need as much monitoring, at least at the older grades.
So it sounds very simplistic when we talk about it and I just, I can't reiterate that enough. We have a building principal, we have a system principal. We've asked for two custodians last year to help even across the district. We couldn't get them, right? So I, I think we have to be realistic about it. We struggle getting people to work for, I don't know how much it is, 12, $14 an hour, maybe. If it's that high, as a monitor. And so we have buildings who literally don't have anybody to monitor lunch. So now you're going to add, and somebody else that also needs to help. And I'm not saying it can't work. The buildings that have a huge volunteer base and they can manage it, it, it's, it's phenomenal. The buildings that have a teacher who doesn't want to stipe in, they just love this type of, maybe they run their environmental club and they really embrace it with students. Um, you know, could we look at more student kind of base clubs? It's easier in middle schools than it is in elementary, but it's, you literally have to look at every single building because they are all different. They have different resources. Um, and again, it comes down to priorities. It takes money. So I can tell you right now, we're, we're going to have probably more requests for security. You know, we have a, um, we didn't get our cell phone, you know, tower, you know, funded at the high school. It's a huge project that we believe is very important. But again, it's not that, I, I think if you ask our principals, they're all passionate about this. And they're going to, you know, they'll, we'll look at this and they'll do everything that they can. But I think we have to, we have to come, come at it also with a sense of understanding of what we're built, what they're faced with. And right now we're having staffing challenges on top of all of that in the classroom.
So that leads me to my question, I think, for our green team here, um, who are addressed for the occasion so lovingly. So this is a very aggressive timeline that you guys presented. You know, there's no budget numbers in here as to what things might cost, what might not cost. Um, even if we get a grant for the hauler, it may just be a grant for one year, then the cost continues after that for the district. Um, there's, there's different pieces here. And I, you know, I know Joe says he wants to be your advocate and so I'll let him, you know, help that. But do you think that this is something that we could work if we start to go backwards a little bit, like at least? I, I remember when we first implemented this, right? And we had the I I remember when we first implemented this, right? And we had the the bins in the the lunchroom. You guys made these amazing educational posters that went up to help the students understand. There were photographs of, for instance, like your apple core goes here, right? Like, it was very simple. It made it easy for uh, kindergartners. They didn't have to look and understand how to read a word. They saw a picture of an apple core. They knew fruit, fruit compost goes in here, you know? If we can take this timeline and I know everybody wants to have things done overnight and and I completely understand why. But is there a way we can look at this timeline and maybe break it apart and spread it out a little longer so that it can work? Um, can work with the fact that, you know, we we have staffing challenges and budgetary issues. Um, and we can have the opportunity to take a look more at, you know, at what grants are available. Because if it's just one year grant and we try it and we like it, that adds to the budget. So maybe there's a way we can do volunteer sharing. One school has a lot of volunteers that want to help and are passionate about this. They can help the schools that don't have volunteers, right? So is there a way to take a look at this timeline and the proposal that you're suggesting and take the burden off? You know, if we have staff members that can't do it at certain schools, um, what are your thoughts on that?
So um, first, I I just want to tell you an anecdotal story about the monitors um, at New Lebanon School. So we did our first pilot there, I think in spring of twenty nineteen. And um, then we we ran that pilot, we did the training, the kids had it down. Um, I couldn't get back in the fall of twenty nineteen right away at the beginning of the school year because I was helping in another school. And about a month into school, I went to New Lab and the monit, the kids were doing the sorting stations perfectly. The monitors had had trained that, retrained them and were like kind of watching them and and they did excellent, excellent job. So it it's doable, you know, if you have monitors who are interested and, you know, are listening while during the training and asking questions and engaged. So it's definitely a, a, something that can be very effective. And um, even when there's not volunteers, it can, it can happen because the kids get it pretty quickly. Yeah, they have, needs a few reminders, but you know, and especially if they have an extra set of eyes on them um, that through the monitors that that's helpful. Yeah.
Um, I'm going to answer your question. I'm just going to highlight a couple of things and I'll ask your, answer your timeline question. Um, we, we just want to reemphasize that the plan doesn't call for any additional staff. Um, this can be executed with existing staff. The the staff just need to know what their responsibilities are. Like the training for the custodians is really important. Um, that would take place in the beginning of the school year. Um, the custodians don't actually per the procedures that were, sorry, I forget the number. I should have it memorized now. Um, but the procedures that already exist, the custodian's responsibility written in that is actually, they don't need to do the sorting, like go into the bin and and move the things. It actually is their responsibility to say to the teacher in the classroom, by the way, like this isn't being sorted correctly. So then they can, you know, correct that action. These things are already be supposed to be the responsibilities that that are supposed to happen. But um, I think that training the custodians and the lunch monitors is going to be really effective with the supplemental volunteer training. We had a volunteer, um, like an amazing volunteer at one school who went every day, right? This, every day for the, all the lunch periods. In my personal opinion, I don't think that that's the best use of a volunteer's time to be in the, in the building, to have to do that every day, right? We make a great effort, have a really thorough presentation that we deliver, and then we go back and do one or two kind of refreshers, refreshers. But once the kids are trained, the monitors and the custodians also also kind of get retrained or learn from like when we do those um, presentations. It really can be very effective. In terms of the timeline, um, the, it it isn't written in in a budget perspective. Um, it would probably be to, to finish the rest of the bins. Um, those bins, when we did, we we paid for five of the six, like we got funding for that. And that was around for
Eighteen hundred dollars.
Eighteen hundred, okay, eighteen hundred dollars total. And we were thinking that if if we, if this proposal was approved, we would be able to find the funding for that. Like there's interested uh, groups in the community that would fund those stations so we could have them in the building when school starts next year. I actually think that the the first, you know, spring, like the the twenty-two to the, the, into the fall, where where I think everyone's getting hung up on is the organics hauling and the reusables. And that is something that we, you know, we, we keep saying that that is a future thing and kind of down the line. Um, and the whole, the intention of getting the the proposal approved, part of that is that it's just a, it is a pilot. The organics hauling is a pilot. We're not asking for funding for all the schools now because we don't know what that number is. And we actually want to come back and share the data from that pilot with you. This is how much waste we're diverting as a district, even though, you know, you can see very clear examples from other, you know, districted schools.
Right. But that's what I'm saying. We ran, not we, but th- this program was run as a pilot at certain schools in nineteen twenty. And I think there was even some even before that. Am I wrong?
Not with the sorting stations, but
Not necessarily sorting, but we, we've had different pilots, but because COVID occurred, we didn't really ever get feedback or from that pilot from our own, from GPS. And so that's my point is if we could go back and do some of those pilots and pick up from where we left off. You were talking, you guys did some incredible work with educating the students with all of those amazing charts. I mean, I distinctly remember going to the schools and seeing them, seeing the development of that over the years with you guys. And so, you know, then we would be able to have that because things have changed, the way we handle things in our cafeterias changed, the way, um, you know, and again, if if we, I don't want to add added pressure uh, and job responsibilities because that's what this might be for lunch monitors, if this is not part of their, and and if we don't have them in the school. So that was why I was asking if there's a way to kind of look at that timeline and break things apart so that we can do this and do it well, but have buy-in as we go. Because we need their, you know, we need everybody's buy-in to be able to do this and do it properly. Um, it just, that's, that was one of the things I was looking at when I was reading through. It's like this incredible opportunity for, for us to kind of leave less of a footprint. But we need to be able to do it so that it's sustainable going forward, you know? Who who expected a pandemic to come in in the midst of this, but?
Definitely. And we understand like the in, we understand the interruption of the pandemic. But in, in all fairness, I don't know that, like, eating food and having waste has, like, really changed because of the pandemic, like that aspect of it in terms of
No, but somebody touching somebody else's food, you know, or, you know, or are there wastes of their food? That's what we're talking, if we're talking about and the way students were supposed to be sitting in our cafeterias over that year and and eating and and the waste product and things like that. I think that's what I'm referring to. So if we can go back to starting with the education piece again, and then moving it a little differently. I mean, uh, again, I don't know, we're, we're talking about different pieces, but that was just my thought when I had read through it. It is how we can do this and do it so that you build the support and have the sustainability of it going forward.
Right. Okay, go ahead. I was just, okay.
And in terms of the sorting stations, I think that the most critical part is having that liquid station, the recycling and the trash. The compost, as we, you know, we've been emphasizing can wait. But having those three bins in place is really important. That's a big bulk of the waste.
Like when we go to do the education, you need the bin, like you need the liquids. It's, it's really the liquids, the other parts, the other components. It's really nice and organized with a signage, which makes it easier with, for the students. But if you don't have the bins there in place, when we go to do the educating, they can't put the liquids anywhere. It, it's really like a simple bucket with a really nicely designed funnel to like reduce splashing. And we, and I'm sorry, we've spent hundreds of hours doing pilots, like we have real data for you. Like we've done that, we've done that work and like we, all, all during the pandemic, we, we totally understand the challenges that the school district face and prioritizing the teachers and the students and education was like first and foremost. But at the, we think that we're in a space now where we can really get back to doing proper recycling and, you know, taking advantage of the results that we did before the pandemic with these, this data that we have already collected. Like we've, we've done quite a bit of work there. I mean, our volunteers, we have, you, you probably saw the people that gave up their evenings tonight to come to this meeting and speak and, and, you know, it's a lot of time over, you know, nearly
Like I said, I I appreciate it and I appreciate all the hard work. I'm just trying, like, you know, see how we can
I know.
More things forward.
Yeah, yeah. Um, how about I suggest this? Um, first of all, it's a first read, right? So we'd have to vote on it anyway. Um, I'm not sure I could add that to the next meeting because we have a lot going on. What, Christina?
I was just gonna say, um, it doesn't make sense because I think you guys just met with Dr. Jones in the last couple of days. It sounds like to maybe, and and along Karen's lines, um, to maybe come up with a plan that we feel like to Karen's point, something that we can do at the start of school that's an achievable, right? Like, let's take, I think we all agree, like, like, take certain elements out for now. You know, there's the food scraps and the sharing, but maybe just focusing on the sorting stations, right? The three, and and if that's something that we could do at every school and see if it's doable at every school and and use that as a starting point and then, you know, get that under the belts, tr- training the kids, you said. And then we can go to the next step down the road. I don't know, Tony, is that something that feels achievable? I mean, obviously every school is different, but it, but setting up the bins and the signage and
You know, what I would say, I think that we're, again, yes, what you're saying, we're very dedicated to doing that. The principals that had it before today, I mean, they're saying they're going to have it again in the fall. I don't even, I don't think that's an issue. The only, the biggest issue was just the outside and the inside. They think it's hot, but other than that, I, I don't see that being huge. Um, I remember something and and you may know, but there were some buildings, for some reason, they were worried about the liquid station. And and it had something to do like with where they have to pour the liquids in the older buildings. So I I don't know if it was a sink issue. I don't know if it's a floor drain issue. So and and I'm not saying it's an issue, but I'm just saying that that's something along the way that was discussed. So things like that, we just have to look at each building again because they're also different.
That's awesome.
My concern is that as a board, we would be doing this top down on, on our principals and our buildings when this really has to be grassroots up. I mean, they really have to want this. The principal really has, and maybe they want it, but maybe they don't have, you know, maybe they just don't have the monitors that, you know, and and sure, you can tell kids to do what they need to do, but whether they toss the stuff in the right place on a day to day basis, I I don't, I don't know how to estimate that. But I really think that this has to come from the buildings themselves. I'm uncomfortable doing this top down when I think it really needs to be, a school building has buy-in, they have the monitors. I mean, the staffing issue is real. I can tell you at where my kids go to school, they're stretched. So, um, and I, and I don't see more staff ju- falling out of the sky. So I, you know, I just, I again, feel like this, I I'm uncomfortable as a board doing this top down. I think this really has to have buy-in from the principals. Um, that's just how I feel. I don't think I'm comfortable.
I don't think this, we're, we're implying that it's completely top down. It's, it's top down and bottom up. It's a partnership and a collaboration.
But they have to want that.
We're having a green team and we know from other school districts, Wilton, West, Westport, Scarsdale, we've all visited them. We, we have data from their schools. They do it the same way that we're proposing and and it works. So why can't it work here?
Uh, yeah, you know, I can't opine on how the districts do things. Those are smaller districts with very different demographics, by the way. But um, that aside, I, I'm sorry, I do think we're a little bit tired, admittedly, as a group. Um, and I think that it would be prudent for us to get more feedback from our principals. Um, obviously, we recognize this is very important. We, you know, we had a busy agenda and we made sure we, we put you on it tonight. So we, we, we obviously all value this greatly. We all have children in these schools. Did you want to say something, Michael?
Yeah, ju- just, just one thing real quick, because as we get more information and things, I had, first of all, thank you. I, I'm, I'm with Joe. I think this should be top down. We should have done it yesterday. We should, we should have done it six months ago. So I, I, I think this is fantastic. But um, beyond that, um, um, the other thing to think about is, um, because I, I, I don't know when our custodial contract is up and and what the language is.
It's the Teamsters contract. I don't know when is the Teamsters up. One minute, it's not fully us. It's, oh, yeah. As for negotiating with the town, it's, it's more complicated than meets the eye, to be fair. That's like Teamsters contract. Okay, so I have to say. So, um, this is important. Um, let me talk about during agenda planning.
I think that sounds right. And we really appreciate being here tonight and hopefully we didn't sound defensive in some ways. It's like, you know, it, um, we're like really eager to have a dialogue with you and hopefully get to a place where we can have something that works in both directions. And I don't know, Dr. Jones, if if this would be agreeable to you, but if you and Dan wanted to get together and say, this is what we think is a workable timeline, but like a real timeline. And then we could also create that after the discussion tonight and kind of, you know, see where we come out with that. Because we, I hope that we, we want to continue moving forward, definitely. You know, uh, there's definitely challenges, but if we, if we don't get started, then, you know, we're not going to make progress.
May I conclude with something? We're going to talk amongst ourselves about this. You see, I have real support on this board. And uh, so we'll talk amongst ourselves. We'll come up with some sort of solution, work together to get this accomplished.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, Mr. Bermonte, who is probably has to teach science in the morning.
Um, we're awake.
Let's go. What sort of drugs does one take to save?
I asked my husband to make an iced coffee. Yeah. Andy and I did provide another video for you, but the slides are also linked on Board Doc. So you have a one more layer of transparency to kind of understand what we've got going on here. Um, we could play the video. I could give you a
Nope. I saw the video. Um, and I, I'm going to go straight to questions. Um, first of all, I'll just, I'll give you my huge support for this. I think that we are seeing more and more freshmen matriculate into this program. I know that there were, I, I was a part of the uh, the eighth grade class that last year that looked at this very closely. And the fact that you're bringing more freshmen into it, like Ashley Malkin, um, is fantastic. And so the fact that you're actually going to bring this down, to me, it's sort of taking the same um, course as math, right? We're starting to have kids that are going four years ahead. I know this is a difference, not a curriculum replacement, but the fact that we keep um, pushing kids that want to be pushed to the next level, um, to me is a no brainer. So I'm a huge supporter of this program. I'll pass it off to the next person that wants to talk about it. Karen Kloski.
So I really like the program and I think it's a very cool idea. I have a couple of practical questions. I think one of them was answered with respect to busing that you, we would, that parents would have to drop their kids off, but I don't think the question was answered as to how do they get back to school? So how does that get to happen?
We're actually still working on that. And because of the time, it's not a course replacement like the kids who go for math. So they finish at a time when all the buses are dropping at the high school. And the way that um, Taryn and Andy have done the schedule, they have, the kids from one building are there on one particular day together. So it's not like you have to go out to three different middle schools. And we, at the high school, you have, you have buses that go across the district. So we think we're going to be able to make it work where they can hop on a bus.
Yeah, but if school starts at eight AM at the school and let's say they're going to Western, they're not making it.
Western starts earlier, right?
And Western starts earlier, so they're definitely not making it. Uh, I just, I raised that as a, as a point for, that was one issue. The, the second question I have is, this works as um, an elective class. Is it a, is it an extra class or are they getting an extra credit? So they'll, they're, they're not going to have a free block like we do with the, that kids do at the high school. So they'll still have, this is an, this is an additional class, it should be said.
These are kids who just are really craving this opportunity. And, you know, I think I said in my board note, we could have just started the club on our own and not even brought it to the board, which is how clubs work. But we think the kids would really benefit from having this as an elective on their um, middle school transcript because a lot of our eighth graders do apply for some phenomenal summer opportunities. And it would be, look good to be able to say they took this as an elective class and self-driven also to want to do it. So it is additional.
And then my, my last question is in regard to the number of students. And I realize that this would be the first year you're doing it, but do we think twelve is the right number? Because um, I just wonder if there's, if you get a, an overwhelming response. Um, and and some really great applications. One, it makes it one difficult to select. But two, are we, how did you come up with twelve? Maybe that's the quick way to get to that question.
I think I can feel that. Oh, sorry. I mean, I've been doing this
I think I can feel that. Oh, sorry. I mean, I've been doing this for some time. And essentially what, you know, there becomes a point where you could have just too many kids and not enough effort. You know, not enough attention for the students. Um, so since I'm, you know, typically in the, in the research classroom at the high school, it runs anywhere from 12 to 15. You know, 15 is usually the max in any given section. And they're, you know, keep in mind, they're doing it a little more often during the week. So I figured 12 would be a really nice, you know, number, since it's only meeting once a week for these kids throughout the year to really get some good traction and really give them the attention that they deserve. You know, they're, they're coming at this from a different point of view. They're, they're younger. You know, they're, they're more curious, they're more imaginative, but they're going to need a little more guidance, in my opinion. So that's kind of how I came across, I came up with the 12. Um, you know, and, you know, getting back to, you know, the interest, you know, I, I really just want to stress that, you know, the kids that will be interested will be inherently interested. They're going to, and that is very easily picked out in this application process that I put together for the high school. Where you can easily tell the difference between, you know, in that process, for example, you get a lot of kids that, you know, I usually have a meeting that where I say, anybody that's got interest in the class, come to this meeting. And the number drops precipitously from the number of kids that attend that meeting to the number of kids that actually put that proposal together and show me that they really are interested in, in, in spending the time, you know, to, to do this. It's a, it's a unique student. You know, I, I learned this early on when I started teaching at the high school where it's not the student that gets the A plus. That's the perfect research student. It's that kid that can, you know, put aside some time to really, you know, approach his curi- his or her curiosity and, and and go for it, you know, so hopefully that answers your question.
No, it does. I appreciate it. Obviously, you're, you're the expert, the professional on this one. I was just curious as to how you, you came up with the number 12. But look, I'm, I like this program a lot. I think it's a great idea. Um, I think one of the areas in middle school that we've been, we, we needed to build up was the science program. Particularly because we don't have, yeah, or an advanced program in science. And this gives those kids an opportunity to, to shine. Um, and I would, I'm really interested to see where this goes and the, the opportunity to see what it could be built upon over the course of time. So I don't know. You know, obviously, other people have questions, so I don't want to monopolize this, but I also want to make sure that this gets done. And if, if it's on for a read, do we have to, we have to vote on and approve? When can we do that? Because I don't want to slow these guys down.
Central, central vote. We'll put it on with the central vote, right? All the more reason to get the central vote going, just saying. Okay, Ms. Downey.
Yes, thank you so much, Andy, um, for making this proposal. Um, one of my children actually did the science program at the high school.
How's that young man?
Um, he's, he's actually left science and gone into a finance career sadly. But anyway, but he was a biomedical engineer for three years out of college. So now he's going to do the business side of it. Um, but I, I can't say enough good things about the program at the high school. And the thought of having our middle schoolers have the opportunity to do this is beyond spectacular. I think it's phenomenal. And I actually think it's right to do it as a class. If it's a club, you know, kids show up, don't show up. If it's a class, they're committed to coming. Um, they're invested in the process. I think it'll be more worth, they'll get more out of it. And I think Mr. Bermonte will get more motivated students out of it. So I wholeheartedly um, support this idea.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelly.
Hey, Andy.
Hey, doing Joe?
I'm doing good. Hey, uh, uh, my daughter is still in science, as you know, so she influenced her tremendously. And uh, my concern is that, are you spreading yourself a little too thin for that high school crowd?
Um, no, I mean, what, you know, the, the give back here was to, um, you know, while I was teaching the research class. If, you know, I was teaching E S L Chem as well. So that's kind of what, you know, what was taken off the plate. And so we've kind of arranged it where, you know, these middle schools have come early in the morning. And then there's a gap of time and then I have the research kids, uh, blocks four, five and six. Um, a lot of the, you know, a lot of the work that happens, as you likely know, because you, you know, Christie went through it, is really after school, you know, and then when it really gets going, it's during the weekend, it's during the breaks. And so, you know, the, the classroom time is really, there's a lot of planning, there's a lot of, you know, consulting. Where are you? What's move, you know, what, what wrong? How can we, you know, how can you do things differently? Um, but the kids that, the kids that I talk about at these board meetings, for example, they spend an inordinate amount of time. And it's those, those are the kids that you're looking for or that I'm looking for in this process. So I, I, I think it's very manageable to come back to your question. And the kids that will go after it and take advantage are going to spend more time than that 45 minutes once a week. They will.
Do you hundred percent have my support? You do great work. Thank you, Andy.
Tara, just real fast, um, following on Karen Kowalski's question, would you be able to tell us if there's anything um, happening in terms of the advanced science program at the middle school?
Uh, yeah, moving off of where we were when I reported this K eight STEM report. We are separating the two courses, so we're going to have an advanced section and an on level section. We're separating them in grades six through eight. And our eighth grade course, we're bringing down those high school standards from earth and space science that aren't currently covered in a geology course before the 11th grade N G S S test. So we've got a little bit of work to do during our summer curriculum work, but uh, we've got some big plans for that.
That is great news. Thank you so much. Yes, Karen.
Well, you just took my bigger question, which was about the advanced science for sixth through eighth grade. Um, so hello to, to Tara and to Andy on this. I, I had sent a couple of questions over and I, I love this idea, I think. But I've seen with my, with my jaw to the ground, some incredible work that our students have done at the high school level on this. And to give them that opportunity for at least the students that are interested in this, younger grades, I think is fantastic. Um, I do have a few additional follow up questions, which I can always wait to, to ask. Because I know you guys are still working through some of the details. Um, and the one question I have, and I think that this is something, you know, I know this year we seem to have more eighth graders. You know, rising ninth graders that were select, you know, applied and, and I know there's a few in this year's as ninth graders in, um, you know, I know that the information is, wasn't always shared equally, not as strongly as at each of the middle schools. Middle schools for eighth graders to know that they had the opportunity to do this. Um, so I think that that's just some feedback, because I think especially with this coming, this would be exceptionally important now for those kids to know. Uh, if they want to do it. Um, so I don't know how, on average, I know you answered for me, how many applicants you typically have for rising ninth graders and how many spaces you have. And uh, for those who want to do this in the eighth grade, you know, will they be better? Does that give them a leg up over students who aren't ready per se in eighth grade if they want to apply to do this in ninth grade or 10th grade? That's my only.
I liken that to, uh, that's a yes and no answer. I mean, the idea that they've gone through it will certainly give them the skill set that we hope they get, you know, from this program. Um, you know, and that should carry forward. But, you know, the way I can answer that is this, you know, to answer your question very bluntly, no. Because what I do is I look at all of the applications very blindly. Um, when they come, you know, for the kids entering the high school. And I look at them not for, um, not for the cure of cancer, not for a regurgitation of NPR's latest in science. Not for those that are written by parents, but I'm looking for things that are really written out of curiosity, imagination. Kids that really are telling me what they want to do and they may not know how. But the idea that they can tell me that they've got this inherent curiosity. And so that's kind of how I do it. Um, but, you know, at the same time, and I kind of said this in my answer to you earlier is what it will do is it will probably sway those numbers, so they will be more, more freshmen. Because right now they are clearly the lowest number, you know, in the pool that are in the high school. So now you probably will, you will get more competitive, you know, applications for the incoming ninth graders. Because they've taken part in this and that can only be a positive. Um, but at the same time, when I have students that apply and their, you know, their proposal falls short. Typically, you know, I can't tell you how much value there is, and this is a personal thing I've never shared, so here it comes. But if a student comes to me and says, hey, you know, Mr. B, I, I, I want to understand why it wasn't good enough. I don't want to improve it. You know, in my mind, that's an automatic, you're getting in next year because you kept coming at me and you kept showing interest. And so, you know, if they don't get in as an eighth grader, they can certainly apply as a ninth grader, 10th grader. And, you know, they, they will have opportunities if the, if the, you know, if the interest is real, is what I'm trying to say. So, you know, yes and no, you know, I, I guess that, you know, if they don't make it the first time, they will get in eventually if they really are persistent about their interests.
I just, the reason I'm asking is I just want to make sure it's clear that, you know, I, I don't want to dissuade. I, I love the idea. We want to push our students. We want to give them more rigor. We want our kids to want more. Um, and to expand their horizons and take that leap into the, into the unknown and do this research. My only fear is, and I want to make, make it clear so that we talk about it here. Uh, for a student that isn't necessarily ready to take that leap in eighth grade. And they're ready by ninth grader.
Yeah, sure.
I don't want them to feel that the kid that did it in eighth grade has a, has a better shot at it. And as long as we can make sure that that's clear to these, to our students, that they shouldn't be afraid to put forward these proposals. Then that's fantastic. I mean, the more we can do to support our students with STEM and STEAM and, and natural inquiry, I think is great.
All right. Anything else on this topic? Okay, this will come back for a vote, um, hopefully next week with the essential middle school. Yes.
So you just vote now.
Yeah, I think, sure, if we want to make a, how do we do it again, make a motion that you're going to, you know, we need six votes to say that we would take it up now.
Two thirds.
We need two thirds to say that we would move it up to vote on it now. So do you want to make a motion to, um, what's the word?
Kathleen, I don't know if that's permissible.
Oh, because it's a special meeting?
It's a special meeting and it was not listed as an action item. It was listed as discussion only.
Okay.
Sorry, Andy.
That's okay.
Yeah, but he made, Michael made a good point. It's, this is a special meeting, so we can't do that. And I didn't have it as an action item, as a discussion, so I can't move it that way.
If we meet next Wednesday night on Zoom, we could just add it to that.
We'll just add it to that.
We can meet a little earlier and add it on if you want to do that.
Let's just agree to spend no time on it and butter it in.
Well, unless there's questions. There, there could be questions.
Oh, boy, Karen, no, I think we're saying, there can't be. Okay, so thanks. I think, I, I think you have a sense that we're going to support this. Okay.
I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Good night. Okay.
You're good, guys. Guys, just to say, I don't know how you do what you do.
Neither do we sometimes.
But I appreciate every one of you. Have a good night.
Thank you too. Good night. Okay, Mr. Kelly, tell us about the waterfall.
Waterfall project. It's a cleanup and a de-weeding of that abandoned lot that you might happen to notice, uh, Route One and Hillside. Uh, we're going to have a crew of people coming in there, a bunch of volunteers on Saturday, this Saturday, from 10 to 1 o'clock. Uh, we're not going to dig any holes. Uh, we're not going to change the, the land at all. We're just going to pick up the garbage. We're going to cut the weeds. Uh, we're going to, uh, make sure it starts to look nice. And it's going to be a three phase process. Phase one, cleanup. Phase two, we're going to do a design. Uh, Sam Bridge has, uh, has given their services to us to do a design for some plantings. We will then bring that design proposal to the board, uh, before the board for approval. Uh, once the board approves the, uh, design, uh, and we get all the things we need to do in order to plant certain, uh, uh, certain plants, bushes and possibly trees, because I know the tree warden is lurking and he wants to be involved in some degree. So therefore, uh, we will then bring him on board. And then the third phase will be the maintenance for perpetuity of this beautiful piece of property. That is the, uh, all of the waterfall project.
Thank you. Ms. Downey.
Just a question in, in the phasing, um, after we have a cleanup and a design, to the extent there's any plantings, doesn't P and Z or wetlands or whoever, whoever has the domain over those sorts of things, the tree warden? Um, are you going through, you'll go through that process with them to get approvals?
We will go through all the necessary process to get all the approvals. Yes, correct. We, there's several organizations who are involved in this, who do a lot of this around town. And they're quite familiar with these organizations and work with them quite regularly.
Sorry, Karen.
Um, well, since I know you're, uh, doing this awesome volunteer, you're having the volunteers come, I know there's no, you know, budget for that. If Sam Bridge is stepping forward to give us possible design to bring for approval. Uh, I don't know if there's any kind of budget that is required for that.
That is a great question. Thank you. This is a
So this was my next, yeah.
Public, private partnership totally funded outside the budget of the Board of Education. Any donations will certainly be brought before the board for approval.
So that's what I was going to say, because we have that entire process for, you know, even if it's in kind labor or any kind of other things. Um, so I'm happy to make sure you have all the appropriate.
Thank you for making sure. We will dot the i's and cross the t's. Thank you.
That's, thank you.
All right, that's a lot of thank yous. Okay, who wants to move to action items? Woo, okay. Christina Downey, talk to us about policy.
I'm, I'm going to do these as two separate items, just because I think.
Yep, we're waiting out there. No problem.
Okay, the first I'm going to do is make a motion that the board adopt policy 5131 point 911 as presented.
I am happy to second it.
Um, so the vote, this is a revised bullying policy, which was looked at for a first read. It's an existing policy that we have in which the definition of bullying was changed to conform to the state statute, which had changed. Um, then we as a committee, policy committee, added some language about in the first paragraph to say as defined herein. Um, and then Michael Joseph had requested that the word creed be added on to item seven on page five, and that has been added. Those are the only changes. Any discussion, questions?
Seeing none, you are going to start to vote?
Happy to call the question.
Okay.
Um, sorry. I have one question. So I have been getting some questions regarding this policy and I just, I just wanted some just general clarification. I think to, to admit, I haven't, I'm not sure where it is in here. But do, is there anything in here with regards to the um, implementation? So I guess the, the regulation, not the, I guess, the regulation part of this that requires students to take surveys or fill out information. I, I, I see that has a component of here, whereas you could anonymously report. But there's, with respect to anything that's reported on bullying, it's just, it's a standard policy about what happens, what defines bullying and what happens afterwards, correct?
All right. Are you good there? Or no? Okay, all right. So there's a motion on the table. So all in favor?
That passes.
Yes, I had. Yep, that passes eight zero. Okay, Miss Downey, next policy?
Okay, I'm going to move that the board adopt policy nine, three, two, five as presented.
I'll second that.
This is a second read of this policy. The first read was many months ago, um, in which we did discuss changing the time limit, which we, uh, for public speakers, which we have left at three minutes. Um, the committee had cleaned up some language in paragraph one, because it was a little unwieldy in the process of doing that. And then in addition, policy governance added to paragraph five, just the notion of our one hour of public hearing was kind of buried in some regulations. We thought it was appropriate to have it in this policy, which discusses our meeting conduct, where we say one hour will be allotted prior to conducting a business. And in the event we exceed one hour, it'll be at the conclusion of the meeting. And those are the only changes to the policy from what exists at present.
That makes sense to me. I know we spent some time on this earlier in the year, so, um, I appreciate that being sort of. Clear. Any other discussion on this?
Okay, Karen, all right. So I'm slow because I'm tired. I'm sorry. Um, I just wanted to add that, um, with respect to this policy, we had gone back and forth. And I just wanted to articulate that we obviously heard the overwhelming response when we wanted to manage it efficiently. And I'll say it again, and I said it back then. when we wanted to manage it efficiently. And I'll say it again, and I said it back then, that the only thing that we were attempting to do was manage the meeting more efficiently. As I'm looking at the clock, it says 11:38, as opposed to stifling anyone's speech. If anyone knows me, I am the last person that would be wanting to stifle speech. I just wanted to create an efficient meeting process. So I think we've accounted for that here and not changing any of that. But moving this forward, just to further articulate the practice that we've already implemented.
I a hundred percent agree with that. I know that you and I were on the same page on that. That was our goal. Okay. Seeing no further. Okay, questions on this? All in favor of this policy? That passes eight zero. Thank you. Okay. Now, we're in meeting plan, agenda plan. Ms. Downey?
Yes, um, the last meeting, the draft agenda, meeting plan for the 2223. Oh, actually, I have to make a motion first, right?
You do.
We approve the 2223 Board of Ed Meeting Agenda Plan as presented.
Ms. Kloski, second it?
So at our last meeting, it was discussed about, this is our plan for next year. Trying to keep it consistent with certain things in every meeting, as well as thinking through the process. We changed the location of all the meetings to Havermeier, except for some central ones. I mean, I'm sorry, to Havermeier or Central, not to go to all the schools, to allow for Zoom participation and engagement at all our meetings. It's too difficult to do that when traveling from school to school in terms of the technology. And we also added a meeting, which was not originally in our meeting schedule for next year, for September 15th, of a Capitol Summit. So those are the, the lowlights or highlights, depending on your point of view, to this. And as we all know, we, we change it from meeting to meeting when we do agenda planning at the end of every meeting. But this is our framework for next year.
And we are certainly not afraid to add meetings. We're very good at that. Okay, any discussion on this? I call the question. Okay. All right, all in favor? That passes eight zero. Okay, we're on all. Okay, Mr. O'Keefe, let's get this motion on the table, sorry. Authorizing summer transfers. Okay, I'll put the motion to authorize the Board of Ed Executive Committee to approve all budget appropriation transfers during a special board meeting date to be determined. Okay.
I have questions.
Yeah, you want me to explain it? Please. Okay, so basically, there will be a bunch of transfers that Sean will have to do as he closes out the year. And so this is just giving the authority to the executive committee, Karen, which is you, me, and Karen, to basically approve that. What?
Yes, we don't have to have a bunch of meetings.
So we don't have to have a bunch of meetings. So like, the three of us get together. So like, last year, Peter Bernstein, myself, and Karen got, you authorized it. We got together, we just sort of blessed it. So now it'll be the three of us. But the board is approving, is giving us that ability.
Do all three, do all three need to agree in order for it to be approved?
Correct. It could be a vote, yeah.
Well, actually, no, I can see why. I was just going to say.
I guess it could be two-one technically. Is that right, Sean? Or Dr. Jones, I, I guess?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
Technically, if they, if they give the authority for, like we've done every year, where we just agree to, it's, you're basically, it's accounting. You're just like moving things between accounts. If the eight of them give the authority to the Karens and me, it, it could in theory pass by two-one, right? It doesn't need to be unanimous vote, I guess. Do you know what I'm asking?
I know what you're asking, but I, I don't know the answer to it. I, I would assume a two-one would pass.
Yeah, I guess. I don't, Michael, I, I don't, we've never had that issue, I guess.
In the last couple of years, it was three-zero.
Can we amend it to make it so it's three-zero? Just, just seems prudent.
I don't know if you can amend it to make it three-zero, and the fact that it's Robert's rules, like you have to, we have to follow Robert's rules, and that would be suspending a different policy as well. Either way, I'd assume if there was something that really somebody was opposed to, we would sit and have a discussion. And it might be something that we not just get a rubber stamp. That'd be my theory.
Yeah, I don't even know, because the policy that I'm thinking about only governs the fact that it has to be a majority vote, and four can be a majority. It has to be a majority vote, right? And it's talking about the eight of us. And so, for example, if something passes, you know, four-two-two, like things have passed before, that's a majority of those that voted, because it's four to two. But that doesn't necessarily work, because it said you actually have to have a minimum of four votes, which you wouldn't have here.
I mean, you could just not grant us authority. Okay, I guess that would be the better way of doing it. And you'd have to bring the vote to the, back to the eight of us, because I don't think we want to, I don't think we can amend the rules, I guess, around that. So the other thing is you could just say, you're happy to get together in the summer and vote on summer transfers.
But, but there's no, I don't understand, there's no way to.
If you make that change, you have to physically be here.
There's no way to do the amendment and just say that
I don't think so. The power is changing.
The power is with all three, as long as they all agree. It seems weird that we wouldn't be able to do that.
Right, I mean, I, I, go ahead, Ms. Downey, I'm going to be on the mark.
This is just about transfers to close out the books. This is all between now and July 1, correct, Sean?
This, this is all about, it's just, it's just year-end plumbing to ensure that all the major object codes are in the block.
And this is also to cover, like, what the shortfall, we're basically taking leftover money from certain accounts and moving it into other accounts to cover the shortfall, for example, for out-of-district special tuition, correct?
We're returning money back to the district.
And then we return money back to the district.
And voting to return the money back, right? If there's leftover?
Yeah, it doesn't seem like it'll be an issue for this one, just in the future, if we ever have other areas where we're delegating.
We don't usually delegate to committees.
This is like, I feel like we really sort of dedicate.
This is kind of the only thing.
Just because it's like, it's basically
It makes you feel better.
Closing the books. We could all just get together. That's another option. Well, you kind of have to, I mean, it would be in the summer, because it has to be after he closes the books, so.
Well, it's going to be before July 1st. So the question is, before July 1st? The question is, when will it be coming? Because can that be part of?
No, because he's still, he'll go past July 1.
To closing the books. It's like, yeah, it's basically reporting the quarter, after the quarter closes. So.
And then this also needs to go to the BET after the board approves.
Right, that's right. That's right. They have, they have one summer remaining in July, that, that, assuming we do it. Yeah. I mean, we don't think this would ever be met with any controversy.
I'm going to call the question. It's not new expenditures, it's just.
You know, I just don't understand why the delegation can't be requiring three instead of a majority.
I just, I don't, I don't know. It's never happened before. I think it'd be an odd precedent to change it. I think it's, if we don't get to three-zero, I could tell you that.
Majority, but I, just because that's how the voting, like.
Voting always works, right?
Well, yeah, it was based on Robert's rules. And that's why I say, I don't, I, I didn't research it, but I think that that's the case. You don't have to ever have a major, you know, unanimous vote for something.
One way to resolve this going forward, if I'm reading between the lines with respect to Cody, is that you do it, you have four people on the executive committee, and it's based upon.
But again.
No, I, I'm not asking you to change it now.
No, you can't, there's no other, the, the only, technically, the only thing this board would need is a chair and a secretary. That is what the executive board is. We have a vice chair. And so that's what the executive committee is. You can't just add another member, because it's a very specific delegation. And it is, it's not just based on us. It's a state requirement to have this chair and a secretary. And it is specifically, those executive committees are created specifically for that situation. If you have some kind of emergency or needs to be done, that you don't have to convene an entire board of eight.
Okay.
I think that that's what it may be.
Can't you just say, like, if there's a two-one, then it comes back to the overall board?
Again, I'd have to go look, but it's based on Robert's rules, and that's how we run our meetings. It's, like, that's part of our bylaws. It, it's just, it's not just us. It's, it's in general how boards do their voting. I mean, I can go back and look, but I'm pretty sure you can't require a unanimous. I mean, I guess you could kick it back, but then that's, what's the point? It's.
I'm just as happy for you guys to not to give us authorization rather than changing the rules.
I think it's safe to say, we won't be able to change the rules now.
Right, so, but we could, we could just, seriously.
It's fine.
I actually, separately, just another time when it's not almost midnight.
So don't approve it, and we can have a meeting.
No, no, no.
Which is fine. I have to be there one way or the other, doesn't sweat off my back.
The Robert's rules stuff is invoked often. I would love to understand what the, the guidelines. I don't care about what the rules are. I care about to the extent that we're bound versus where their guidelines. That's, that, that would, I'd like to know the answer to that at some point.
Okay, so do you, honestly, I, I really, I mean, I'm there either way. So I'm kind of indifferent on which way this vote goes, honestly, so.
Let's vote on it.
Okay, so the motion on the table is to authorize the executive committee on this summer, whatever I said, on the summer transfers. All in favor? Okay, that passes eight zero. Okay. What? I guess, sure, exactly. Okay, um, next, let me see if I can get this on the table. Budget priorities and procedures, has it in front of them? Okay. Improve the fiscal year 2024 budget procedures.
So this is, this is a draft of the full year 2024 budget priorities and procedures. Karen Hirsch has already asked a few questions. So there's, one of them was in the, on the first page at the bottom, budget development procedures. On the first sentence, superintendent will establish goals and priorities as the basis for budget decisions that align with GPS strategic plan 2015 through 21. A suggestion or question was, you know, based on, upon board approval.
No, is it because we're, right now, revising, we're going to have a new strategic plan with different dates? So it'd be silly to plan next year's budget on a strategic plan that will have been retired by then. So it was, do we want to change that? Instead of having a strategic plan 2015-21, you could take the date out.
Just take the date out.
You could just take the date out, or you could say, you know, align with a new strategic plan upon board approval. But I, I just figured you might want to take out the year, because it won't be relevant anymore.
If we take the dates out, it's the same meaning, and it just does, and doesn't have, it's not inconsistent. I think taking the dates out is cleaner, Karen.
Yeah, that's fine. I, but that was my sort of question, just because it's, you're not building a budget based on a strategic plan that's been retired.
Go ahead, Michael Joseph.
I have a similar question about the board, board goals, which I know are still in draft form, but if.
But that's not part of the budget.
Why wouldn't it be though?
I don't know. There's not, well, I guess because our goals are tied in with the.
But it, but it says here, it says that the budget documentation should allow for the BOE to link between the budget and the goals, strategic annexatives, and core academic.
Right, so you don't need to.
What were you referring to?
It's, well, I would assume it's, I didn't write it, but it's board goals, superintendent goals. But the only reason I was asking about strategic plan is because it had the date.
I, I had another question while you're reading that. That's okay. Does this include Sean's, the new capital improvement process that I know Fred and his team have, and have put into place? Or suggested? This is why the capital plan is going to come now, earlier next year, like in October?
Yeah, I mean, it, it certainly will. I mean, it's a, it's a new town process, so we would always follow the town process. We can certainly add in another item that says follow the new CIP process.
Do you think we should? Anyone? Do you guys think so?
I think we have to.
Right. Okay, I think, I, yeah, I think so. I mean, it's very clear that that's the new plan, right? So. Go ahead, Michael Joseph. I think we did, we saw this, right? Last time or no?
No.
Oh, no? Oh, boy. Okay. Okay, that's why there's always new questions. Okay, so why don't we, the Central Middle School meeting is starting to look like a lot of fun. It's a, it's full of action items that will be fast.
Yeah, because I mean, this just, I mean, we just got this like yesterday.
That's fair. So let's make the changes that you said so far.
There was something, you know, another reason why it came late.
I think, yeah, perhaps.
Well, then I had one other question, which I had sent over to Sean, and which I will save here. And if we want to have, if we're not voting on this, it makes even more sense, which was under the budget development procedures, that second paragraph. If a new program or service initiative is being considered for the upcoming fiscal year, it will be presented to the board by the superintendent no later than September 30th. Well, for instance, earlier tonight, and it's definitely not September 30th, we were just presented with a possible new program or service initiative, and we have a new course, but, you know, the middle school. My point was more, is September 30th really a realistic date? Or do we need to change the date or whatever? I, I gotta.
It is not realistic.
So if, if we're not voting on this tonight, can we, can you, do you want to, do you guys want to take a look at that date and think about revising?
By the way, I recognize too that Sean's setting us up. He's leaving us with this, so we really.
The big kiss goodbye. Appreciate it. But anyway, I saw that and I thought to my, and then, by the way, below an operating budget, it also has the strategic plan date of 2015 to 22, which should then also be removed.
Okay, so I think we have a few changes. Ms. Costin?
I make a motion to adjourn.
You are denied.
You can't skip the rest of them. You had to go through the whole process there.
Not hearing you. Come on. Okay, so how do you want us, we have a bunch of comments here. We're clearly getting silly. Do you want us to, do you have them, Sean? Or do you want us to send them out with all of them?
I, I think I have them all. There was, there was two others that Karen had mentioned as well. One was the utilization, adding in the utilization of SARP funding in the operating budget. We already have it in the capital section. So yes, we should add that. And then there was one about.
Yeah, it was under number five, ADA compliance.
Yeah, then the other one is the ADA. I think we should, Karen, I think we should add that to, instead of number five, or squeezing in a four A, maybe under number four facility standards, including ADA compliance.
I just know from the year prior, that's where we had it. That's why I was asking. It was under capital budget was number five, priorities which include, this one now says health and safety maintenance requirements, blah, 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 blah. It just before it said ADA.
Okay, so we'll, we'll put in a, we'll put in a.
But wherever you think it works, if it's under number four, wherever you think it works, I just, I figured ADA's compliance is still one of our priorities.
Okay, I'll, I'll add it standalone.
Is it possible to just get a red line between this document and what we had last year, just to see what we're changing and how we're changing it? That might be easier to facilitate our comments.
Yeah, that's a good point. Would that be okay, Sean?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, so I, this, Ms. Kloski, we're not going to take action on this tonight. That's fine. There's a bunch of changes. So this will come back in our agenda planning with the other things that I'm forgetting to add. Okay, good. Yep, no vote.
So do we need a motion to suspend vote?
No, no, we just. Okay. All right, good. All right, moving on. This is my motion up on the table. This is a motion for the chair to sign the contract laws and Dr. Jones, two percent raise for 2022-2023. Ms. Downey? Are you second? I think you, Ms. Downey. Okay. Yes, exactly. So this is just for me to actually be authorized to sign that. Yes, Michael Joseph? Well, the contract is agreeing to basically each year, we, we negotiate the salary, right? And so the two percent was in the budget. No, every year, we, like, so she took a zero during COVID. And then we put two percent in the budget this year, and this just authorizes me memorializing it. Go ahead, Ms. Costin.
What are, are we allowed to give her more?
We are. Um, it's not in the budget. We should probably have talked about that at the budget time. We are. Um, it's not in the budget. We should probably have talked about that at the budget time.
What about all that extra money we're about to give back to the town?
I appreciate your.
I think we're going to have a lot to give back.
Don't be so sure.
I had to pay for dinner tonight, for God's sakes. We didn't have that much money, you know?
It was S R money.
We don't have a refreshments budget.
I, I, I did, I did a little research and uh, yeah, I, I think going forward, we should have that discussion before budget time or after budget time. Just saying, we have an incredible superintendent, as you've read her review last week, so, you know.
All right. So I'm going to call this vote. All in favor? Okay, that passes eight zero. Thanks very much. Okay, moving to the financial and staff and report. Cut a motion up, put this on the table. Sorry, I'm really losing. Authorizing the financial report for the period ended May 31st, 2022. Is there a second, Ms. Downey? Okay, Mr. O'Keefe.
Okay, uh, so as of the end of May, our year-to-year actual is 150.8 or 86.7% attainment of the full year budget, 173.9. That compares to an attainment at this same point last year of about 88%. So that's a positive sign that, you know, we're slightly better on the, on an attainment basis. On a year-to-year basis, we're up seven million year-to-year or 4.8%. That compares to a budgeted growth rate of 5.2%. So again, slight better uh sign. The primary drivers of the year-to-year growth, the seven million salaries are up 800,000 or about 7.7%. Services are up four and a half million or 28% driven primarily by transportation and special ed tuition. Um, so the transportation driven primarily by contractual increases, additional sped routes and and last year we had lower spending due to, to, to one week periods where we didn't have school due to COVID. Um, bottom line for this year, I think, uh, you know, it's been tight all year with overruns in special ed and you know, we did have a limited expense freeze in March that continues to this day. Um, I think we're, I think we're still in good shape. Um, and that's even with containing the additional police. So there's a lot of balls in the air. We, you know, we expect to close in the next two weeks, but I do believe that we should be okay. Um, capital available balance down 200K from the April report. Um, the only other notable thing in this report is that the GHS entryway project, uh, we reclassified from the 21 and 22 lines into the building committee projects, but uh, which is where it belongs. And again, you know, the numbers reflect that, uh, you know, we continue to have a focus on closing out the projects, especially those from full year 21 and, and prior. Um, and since September of 2020, when we started tracking, the pre-22 project available balances has come down significantly by about a little over $20 million uh, or about 70% of those balances. Over to food services, uh, with May behind us, we continue to see a significant shortfall in cash sales due to the free meals for all program, which will continue to the end of the year. Uh, last I heard, that will not continue into next year. Uh, however, state reimbursements have been significantly higher than what we expected. Uh, we're, you know, up about 3.4 million dollars uh versus the cash sales being down 2.4. So when you net those out, we expect our, uh, our total revenue to be above budget by about a million dollars. Um, and then finally on expense, uh, with the lower spending in supplies and materials, we expect to be about $200,000 below budget. So good news in food services, doing pretty well. Um, and uh, let's see, over to special ed tuition, really not much change in the sped chart in the back of the package. You know, we're still looking at about coming in at 8.4 million, which would be a million one over budget and about 600K higher than what we projected at the beginning of the year. Um, the ARPS chart in the back of the package, the way back, back of the package, it's the same chart that was reviewed by the board, approved by the board, approved by the BET and approved by the RTM. So no change there. Uh, I know I'm taking this out of order. I hope it's okay. Can we do transfers now?
Are you joking?
What's that?
I thought you meant the summer transfers. I'm like, I could have sworn we just talked about.
No, no. There is, there is one transfer in the month, which is for information only. Um, you know, it, it does not, it's all within the same major object code. It's a transfer of 632,000 to cover higher expenses in medical consulting. Um, and it's driven primarily by the costs associated with hiring a contractor for, you know, a teacher of the hearing impaired, substitute nurses and hire OTPT services. Um, so, so that's, that's an information one. So no action required on that. And that is it.
Okay. All right. Motion on the table is to accept the financial report. All in favor of accepting it. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Karen.
So my question relates to one of the contracts on, I don't know what page it's on.
Three.
Three, sorry. Um, the district learning, the focused on learning, it's called T E P L training sessions. What is this? I just, it's, it's, it comes up periodically, not every month, but at times and I'm just, like, I, I get the, with respect to special ed, that piece of it and other therapies, but this one, I just don't understand what, what, what is focused on learning?
Focused on learning is, is the name of the company uh that provides the temple training sessions. It's also, incidentally, the same company that is doing all of the, the curriculum updates, you know, and, you know, the Todd White. Uh, that's, that's, he's focused on learning. And the 211, 480 is, is for temple training. The, the original contract was established for temple training, but there's also some professional learning in there. Um, so it's more than just the temple training. Um, the, the other focused on learning expenses are um, those are deliverables and, you know, do not have a contract. So the 211 is just for the, a portion of services, insulting services provided by focused on learning.
So this is, the, these are the, these are trainings that are given and they're given every, every month or so. I just, I was curious because I went back through and, and we've spent almost a million dollars on this since September. So I was just curious as to where this falls within the, within the budget.
Well, I'm not familiar with the million dollars. I mean, are you including the, all of the curriculum updates?
Now for the month.
No, I was just looking on the, what, what's been spent on focused on learning. I, I didn't realize if you should, if you brought, I added them all together. Maybe I shouldn't have. But I just was like, I don't know what this is. And so I was like, well, where, where am I seeing this? And so it, it comes up periodically uh, on certain months. And so I was just curious because it's not all the same amount. It's different amounts. And I just was curious as to what it was and um, how that's accounted for. That's all.
Sean, do you want me to speak to that a little bit? Um, so focused on learning is actually the consultant company that we use all across the district. So everything from temple training, the largest portion this year is over $600,000 in all of the new materials that are being produced for middle school, English, ELA and middle school um history, uh, which we've been working on that. And that's a whole team of people from focused on learning uh that are working with our staff on all of that. Um, we also, um, especially Todd White, he's worked in the district for a long time and very, very highly regarded. So uh, principals actually use some of their site-based money and they'll uh bring him in just to come and visit classrooms and give feedback on teaching and learning. Uh, most recently, last week, he was working with um special education and the, uh, well, I don't know if he did the work last week or he's coming next week, but um, he's working on co-teaching and doing co-teaching workshops. So it's just really high level professional development is a lot of it. And then curriculum materials that he helps us produce.
Karen.
Um, well, I think this is, I had sent you a question separately and I didn't realize it tied in with this. So I, I had asked about the contract for Todd and, and for next year. And so maybe that might be, I don't know if, I know you don't have the answer yet, but that might be going forward as a discussion that we could have.
What was the question, Karen?
Well, you and I are in the curriculum council. And so I had sent a question saying for next year, because Todd was talking about the work that's continuing for next year. I said, do we have a year-to-year con, is it a yearly contract or is it a contract for the you know, majority of the work? And I, so I had asked specifically, uh, you know, in that regards. And I didn't realize it was much, that it was things that were going beyond. So I just, that might be just a helpful information to know if it's a year-to-year contract or a, a project-based one. And we can have that discussion.
It's definitely project-based. Like, we bring him in to be specific.
It's a year-to-year contract based on what needs to be done and what we need his expertise for.
It's all projects, like time materials project. Okay. There you go. Is that good?
Okay.
All right. Um, all in favor of accepting the financial report? As is one, two, three, four, five. Is that right? Six, like six? Did I see? Okay. Did you, Michael Joseph, were you in favor or no? He doesn't think we should vote on it. And he's right, because I don't know why I keep putting odds in action. But okay, so you could object on, so you're going to abstain or are you saying no?
Uh, yeah, we'll do abstain this week.
Okay. And what would you like, Karen? You want to know? Okay. So that's cool. So that's six, one, one. Let's just mix it up. Okay, cool. All right. Um. Okay, I'm going now to the agenda plan and it was, it's historical because June 16th should have been the end of the agenda plan, but it is not. Okay, so for June 22nd, 8pm virtual, I have three things. Info, CMS, Edspec, action, new middle school course and action budget priorities and procedures. Yes, Ms. Hirsch?
If we think there's going to be significant conversation about anything other than central, can we maybe do it a little earlier?
No, because of um Cody.
You could start earlier or not. I could try to join and just be on mute.
We can do the action items.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes. So do you want to do seven thirty?
So if we could start it a little earlier, that would just be helpful. I just know it, like I, I have.
Are you guys go with seven, seven thirty? What's the best ask here?
Well, if he wants to be for, for central, we should just do it seven thirty.
Okay, so seven thirty virtual, June 22nd. Okay.
Although, no, 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 I have to, I, I, it, actually, it's a good point. I have to take a, we're not voting on central, I guess, because there, there's some, I, I have to go back and read our policy as to having somebody join midway through a meeting. But I don't think they can join just to vote. So we're not voting on it. So it's okay.
That's right. So if he misses the votes, it doesn't matter and then.
Right. So then it's, so that's why I was just, it might, yeah. It, it's midnight. My brain doesn't work that well.
All right. Got it. And then we'll have to have one meeting after that to just vote on the CMS. Edspec, which that should be a 30-second hopefully meeting. Oh, mother of God. Okay. Anything? Ms. Costin, did she leave? She had her table?
Left. We can't, George, she's not here.
She had her table. Her computer's still here.
No, her computer's here.
Do we have to wait for her?
No, no, I would like to make a motion.
Let's do it. All right, Joe, you're back to your job.
I'd like to make a motion. What else have you to do here? I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Second, Michael Joseph, all in favor? That passes seven zero because Ms. Costin is not present.
She did not vote.
Ms. Costin did not vote to end the meeting.